I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Out of the gate here, I've got a couple of guests and we're going to do a little shift into the agenda. I'm gonna ask Superintendent Dr. Zelmer to, we'll move him up this morning on the agenda. So with that one change, I can ask for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
I will move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration of plans for payment dated August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve.
No, second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I'd like to introduce a friend and partner in crime, Andrew Allen. He is the CEO of YSS and I'm gonna just have you move the podium here and Michael's gonna be, we've got your slideshow and the link if you want to tell him what you prefer first and.
Yeah, you've got Andrew Allen, present CEO of YSS. I'll tell you, my most important title, however, is alumnus. I was a recipient of services from YSS as a teenager. And so the drive here this morning brought back a lot of memories. I did a trip to Eldora, kind of a scare tactic when I was seventeen. I had police pick me up in shackles and take me to Eldora State Training School. And it was the start of a scared straight sort of a incident. But then later, after getting treatment at YSS, you know, I took twelve step training through the state training school for many years. And so it was a great opportunity to travel that road and come here today. I just wanna thank BJ and the board, or your commitment to CICS, the Mental Health and Disability Services Region. It's not quite a year ago. I think we presented in August and then came back in September where BJ as Chair of CICS called for the vote, which was probably one of the highlights of my personal and professional career, approving ten million dollars to get Ember Youth Recovery Campus initiated and off the ground. And we broke the ceremonial groundbreaking just two weeks ago. So really, really grateful to Hardin County for the commitment to mental health, especially children's services. I have spent a lot of time talking to a lot of people about the work that we do. And I remember that meeting specifically where I didn't have to do a lot of talking because people were finishing my sentences and talking about the need that exists as we come out of the pandemic to provide mental health services, substance use disorder services, crisis services to kids and families oppressed this state and this region. So maybe you wanna go to the PowerPoint. I can just kind of walk you through here real quick. You know, the campaign is a place to heal. When we presented to the CICS Board, not quite a year ago, this was a twelve million dollar project. We raised two million. You had a board member say, how much of the ten million do you need from us? And they said, all ten million. And that was the motion that BJ took and they acted upon. This has now grown to a twenty-plus million dollar project. So just given supply chain issues, inflation. Also, just increased scope and I would say interest from individuals, foundations of the state in ensuring that this is best in class and really meets the needs for the community for years to come, the state for years to come. I can't disclose yet because it's still confidential, but it was called to Des Moines for a meeting yesterday and a one million dollar commitment to this project to get us just that much closer. So YSS is a forty-six-year-old organization. Oh, here's me. We do a lot of things, three hundred and fifty employees, you know, mostly central in North Iowa, but we've got a couple statewide contracts. I mentioned that I'm an alumnus, so that's me in the mid-nineties, seventeen and three-quarters years of age, desperate and hopeless, did not want to be a part of life. And, you know, I could have been a drain and I know a lot of people who don't get treatment, you know, end up in jail or institutions or they end up dead. I was fortunate that I got treatment and I'm someone today in long-term recovery. YSS doesn't just provide treatment, but we're really focused on youth development. And so they, you know, put me in leadership positions, asked me to be on the board. And I helped with a lot of volunteer fundraising for the organization until seven years ago when the CEO stepped down and I took over from him. So I'll just spend time talking about, I think, just, I've got a lot of pictures here. So go ahead. This is our mission. Our mission is to create hope and opportunity by putting kids first. But we do it in three different ways, education, counseling, and stability. You can see where we have presence. It lines up really, really well with CICS and the region. The only community-based center that's not in CICS is our Des Moines-based community center. Go to the next one. You know, some of the statistics as it relates to, you know, behavioral services in the state, forty-eight number of beds. There's seven thousand kids in need treatment every year and don't get it. And ninety percent of drug addicts and alcoholics start before their eighteenth birthday. So, you know, the experience that I had getting sober at seventeen, you know, was transformational. I didn't have a record. It didn't stick with me, you know, gave me an opportunity. I was worked for Principal Financial, became president of the foundation. So I led the, was the twenty-fourth largest corporate foundation in America. And I wouldn't have had that chance that, you know, I had probably a record. Here's where we're operating our programs now. We've got a shelter and addiction treatment program in Mason City, Francis Lauer. And then we're out of old houses. For a while, you know, in the early, mid-seventies and early eighties, and even through the nineties, these have been good places to care for kids, home-like environments. It's kind of their home away from home, but they just weren't set up for treatment. They don't have good line of sight for a safety standpoint. They're not durable and they're in the middle of town. And so we've really had this vision to do something that's more nature-based and facilities that were designed and that needs kids. So here is the fifty-three acre parcel located, it's rural Cambridge. It was donated by Dr. Jay Brown. We had been looking at probably, you know, half a dozen different sites. He gave us this property when I accepted the gift. I said, if we find a better site, we'll do it there and sell this. He was agreeable to that. We probably looked at twenty sites total and went with this one because it is centrally located. It's ten minutes from Ames, ten minutes from Anthony. It's not too far off the interstate. It's, as you can see, prairie and timber. It is rural in nature. It is not remote. So we can still get to services, but we've got kids kind of set apart in a space that can get them connected to the healing power of nature. You can see kind of this main entering path in and it opens up into a prairie space. This is where we did the groundbreaking, BJ. And there's gonna be four buildings. This is like the hub welcome center. This is for shelter and crisis stabilization. And these two cabins are for residential treatment. We'll try to take advantage of a full site through paths and, you know, an amphitheater and different spaces, recreation area. You can't see it on this, but we needed a lot of dirt and there are some therapeutic values to water. So there's gonna be a three-acre pond right here. That's really, I feel like, gonna make the site more reusable.
The next slide.
Um, this is the front. I'm just really so proud of the space, guys. You saw the houses where the kids were living. And again, they're not terrible places by any stretch. But this project values young people in a way that no other project in the state ever has. It is again, because of the commitment of your county through CICS, that we were able to, you know, have a vision that was really the spectacular. This is the front of the hub welcome center. It's kind of the welcome center intake. This is in front of the gym. This is the space that clients will come through to get to the cafe and the school. You can go to the next slide. This is the backside. So again, you can see this is gonna open out. The last picture I'll show is kind of the backside, but this will open out onto that fifty-three acres, you know, looking through prairies, seeing the timber, you know, outdoor space. We're gonna put some roll outdoors. They're kind of popular. So, you know, the gym can kind of, you know, come out onto the patio. And, you know, again, the focus here is to be nature-based. These are the cabins. So these are really big buildings. You can't tell it from this angle. And that's part of the intent is we want it to be trauma-informed. We don't want it to be overwhelming. We're calling these cabins. There's three of them. They are two-story walkouts or single-story walkouts. And they'll have six beds on each wing. And there's, you know, two wings, two floors. So they'll have the capacity for twenty-four kids each. You can go to the next slide and see the backside of it. So you can see kind of the scale on this. The landscape worked really well for walkouts. These, we're doing a lot to get light down into the lower level. It won't feel like a basement. It'll feel just like on-grade. And the way that we've got it landscaped, it'll be a really, really special place. Kids, the views, all look out into nature and allow, you know, essentially two separate menus. So for instance, if this was residential treatment, you would have boys, so gender-based, boys in one cabin, girls in another. On one level is adolescents, so twelve to eight, twelve to seventeen years old. And then the opportunity with this campus is to grow into transition-age youth, eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. If you think about treatment now for transition-age youth, if you've got a twenty-year-old who needs treatment, they go to treatment with six-year-olds. And their brains aren't fully formed. And so it really makes sense for them to be, you know, put in and have a program specific to them. Next one, here's the backend. I had a board member tell me that's where I take my family for vacation. And that just really speaks to the commitment that I was making to our kids. It's gonna be a really spectacular space. Here's, these are some earlier renderings. This is not what the inside's gonna look like, but I just wanted to give you a sense that we're being really intentional about being trauma-informed and ensure that the space that needs the kids that we're working with. I guess I don't have the floor plans. There's four classrooms in the hub. There's a big cafe. There's a gym. There's fitness space. There's, you know, a conference room. There's some administrative offices. There's a nurses station. I'll tell you this, you know, just, I told you a little bit about the dollars and cents. Everything is being value engineered right now. So it will look mostly like that, but the the half-court gym is probably a little less than half-court. And, you know, the fitness space is a little less and the classrooms aren't quite as, I mean, it's just, things are so expensive. I thought when we got the ten million dollars, we were we were well underway. And so three, three programs, the crisis stabilization, emergency shelter and addiction treatment. And you can see the number of beds associated with each and the duration of the stay. Crisis stabilization is just like, hey, you've got a kid and they're freaking out and it doesn't rise to the level of hospitalization, they can come here for one to ten days, get connected with services, but the intent to get them back home. Emergency shelter, these are kids that have been removed from their home because of abuse or neglect. And addiction treatment, I think they're pretty. We raised fifteen, sixteen, maybe close to seventeen million. The original, the estimates were, they got a size twenty-five million. We've got it back down to twenty-two. I'd like to get it to twenty, but we still need to raise a little bit more money. We're still gonna move forward. Everybody that I talked to about this project is really excited. We're gonna get the money raised. I am sure of it. And I'm hopeful that we can add some things like a greenhouse and some different things that I think will add to the treatment for the kids. We are delayed a little bit on a new permit. So we did the ceremonial groundbreaking, but, you know, expect to be like in earnest by September, October, and then spring of twenty-four. The ribbon cutting, which will all be invited to. Here's just some pictures from the groundbreaking. So you can kind of see the site. There's just a few photos here. And I'll take questions if you've got them. We had a great turnout, probably a hundred and fifty or two hundred people showed up. You know, we had, I think, just estimated like fifty. But there's so much interest in this project. So much need that exists. The governor came, Senator Ernst came, Randy Kingsborough, who represents your district was there. And there's your CICS Board with BJ in tow and some of the CICS staff. Just really appreciate BJ's stewardship of that board and Hardin County is well represented. And YSS is serving Hardin County kids right now. You know, you're not immune. You're a smaller county. I mean, I think there's a lot of small counties in, you know, you've got ninety-nine, the size of the state of Iowa. I looked at some of the Iowa survey. I don't know if you've shared that with your board, but Iowa survey breaks down the information by county. And I think suicide, they look at sixth, eighth, and eleventh graders. And your numbers were lower in some respects, but the one that stood out to me was it's nineteen percent of your eleventh graders have attempted suicide. It was five out of thirty-two, only thirty-two respondents. Suicidal ideations, nineteen percent, seventeen percent had tried. So you've had five kids out of thirty-two who had tried to kill themselves in the last year in your county. And so that's not, it's not divergent from the state as a whole. It's thirty-seven percent have experienced a week or more of severe hopelessness or sadness. A third have thought about suicide and a quarter have, of them have tried it. And so when you do the math, it's one out of every twenty kids in the state. So you go into any classroom. My kids went off to school this morning. I've got two sophomores. Every class that we go in today, there's one kid in that classroom who's tried to kill themselves in the last year. And we hope that Ember, you know, it's an opportunity to really ensure that kids and families have quality services to address what's a real, real issue as regards to behavioral health. So grateful for all you, sorry, it took so much time.
It's okay. Lance, questions? Major campuses or church in there as well?
Yeah, spirituality is a big part of it. There's not like a church chapel, but we've got dedicated space for kids to go to pray and to meditate. I would love something more specific. It's been on our list. I wish there was something that was more specific, like a chapel.
Renee?
I don't think I have any questions, but I'm anxious to tour it when it's done.
Yeah. Oh, you bet. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Can you explain the ten million, how it came about?
Sure. So when the state of Iowa, through legislative action, took away the levying authority by the counties to fund regional mental health, we have a strong fund balance because of the responsibility and the stewardship of the CICS Board and the leadership on the administration team, that we had funding available. And there was a directive to do some spend down. And so we believe that this was something that the region would greatly benefit from. And when our board of numerous supervisors throughout the region, from every political leaning, every cultural leaning, decided this was an investment in our community and in the future. And so we utilized that spend down and got approval from DHS and State Office to make sure that this was allowable. And so it was unanimous that day that we approved it. And it just shows that when you put many like-minded people together, while some differences, that we can make a big difference. So, yep, that's where the money came from. It wasn't a Hardin County spend.
Right.
This was a means of spending down the fund balance that was gonna be required anyway.
That's reimbursable following year.
Correct. Yep.
Reimbursal, I think you get some of that money back too. You would have lost it, didn't you?
Correct.
Right.
Yep. If there's nothing else, I appreciate you taking.
Yeah, really. We'll see you later. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Maybe you can send it to, there's a link to for a fly through.
Yeah, they've got it. We'll get some stuff posted online. Yeah.
And I'll talk about that other issue here. Thanks. Anything else I wanna stick around for? Can we talk about water districts or?
No. All right, Dr. Z, you are up. I thought you were gonna come in and talk about how excited we both are to have Brody Chesky joining our.
That, well, that's a, that's a good thing too.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm going kind of old school. I'm usually a pretty techy guy and I, but I go to so many different places that I never know what the, what the situation's gonna be. But honored to be here today. Adam Zelmer, Superintendent of South Hardin Schools, Eldorado, Providence, and Hubbard Radcliffe. I haven't came to a board of supervisors meeting since I was hired five years ago. This is year number five for me, as superintendent of the South Hardin School. Then it's, it's just an honor to live, work, and play here in Hardin County. And so I wanted to come to you guys today and just talk to you a little bit about our upcoming school bond because we know that when our schools are strong, our communities are strong, our counties are strong, that we thrive. And so this is an important project for, for really all of Hardin County and specifically the Eldorado and Providence and Hubbard Radcliffe Community School District. At the end of the day, this is an Eldorado and Providence Community School District project, and the voters of Eldorado and Providence Community School District will be voting. And on September thirteenth, we're looking at a nine point nine million dollar bond vote and fifteen point seven million dollars in total projects. So before the pandemic began, that's Christmas before, we did a facilities audit where we had a group from Estes Construction and ICAT come in and look at every single one of our facilities. And they identified safety concerns, health concerns, things that needed to be addressed immediately, things that needed to be addressed five years down the road, and things that could wait ten, fifteen, and twenty years down the road. From that, we developed a master plan and started prioritizing those things. Facility group came together and just started meeting on trying to bundle and package those projects and get a vision for the project. Pandemic hit, all stopped for a year. We came back together a year later and began the process again with that same board and it included community members, students, parents, teachers, school administrators, folks from the city, and came up with this plan. Forty, if we want to do every single thing, touch every single thing in our district, estimated to cost forty-two million dollars. We obviously don't have the capacity to do that. And so we looked at what, what is a group of projects that we felt was responsible to our taxpayers, but also is gonna give us just some great school facilities that are gonna carry us forward for the next fifty years. And so that's how this came about. And so we're looking at an addition of a new gym at our elementary school, a new media center. Currently, our media center is in the boiler room of our elementary school and has no windows. So that would be a great thing. Our preschool classrooms right now are, have no windows besides one that has an air conditioner in it. And that air conditioner has to run all year long because it's right next to the boiler here at our elementary school. Additional parking and a new safety access drive on, on the north end. And then every single current classroom, our current elementary school is over seventy years old and all of the fixtures, everything is original. So besides, we did install marker boards and set up chalkboards over the years, but everything else is really original. So all new technology, all new carpet, all new windows, all new paint, lighting, and all new fixtures in the classrooms, and then getting everything up to ADA compliance. The other part of this project then is really about safety and security at the elementary school and making a connection between our buildings. Right now at our elementary, we have three separate buildings that shoot off to a old gymnasium, a, what we call the Tiger Pack Building, that currently houses our art, music, and preschool classrooms and our elementary. And so this would be an opportunity to bring it all into one campus. Students don't have to go outside anymore, traverse the winter weather and deal with any safety issues during the school day. And so there would just be one entrance for students to enter during the day, and then they would be safely inside our campus. And then finally, an expansion of our current technical education. My wife and I just finished building a new house here about a year ago, and it's, it's tough to find contractors to do that work. But what we found is the contractors we found are students that participated in our current technical education program years ago. They've come back here. They've stayed here. They've raised their families here. And so that's the sort of thing that we wanna harbor for our students moving forward. And so right now, we have five thousand square feet of space for our current technical education. That means we can only have four welding bays. Sometimes we have twenty students that would like to take welding. We can only have eight students legally in there at a time because we only have four bays. So this will give us the opportunity to expand our metalworking to ten bays and also then can expand our construction trades because we would have five thousand square feet for construction trades and five thousand square feet for our metalworking. And then these are great additions to be able to get those programs to get two years of their education done here and then give them to one of our local community colleges to finish that up. And then hopefully keep them here in our communities. Just a few renderings and examples of some of the pictures. Our project's a little bit different than the YSS project in that we do know what this is going to cost. We, we worked with a construction manager and actually Chad Hoelupnik, who's an alumni of our school district here. And so it was actually in May that we just got our last cost estimate, that this is fifteen point seven million dollars and it does include a fifteen percent contingency on top of what they're estimating the cost of these projects to be. So we are very comfortable with the fifteen point seven million. And the reason why we're only asking for nine point nine million dollars from our taxpayers is because we do have, we've been good fiscal stewards of our money as well. And so we have sales tax dollars that we will be able to use. Right now, the sales states in state penny sales tax goes through twenty fifty-one. And so we're gonna leverage ten years of those funds to be able to do the rest of these projects. So about six million dollars of it will come from the safe fund, the sales tax money, and then that other nine point nine million dollars will come from the bond election that will come up on September thirteenth, if passed. So we've been working with DCI Construction Managers and Opian Architects on these projects. And you can just see here how we have the current buildings and how they fill in together there to make one, one closed campus. This is a community meeting number fourteen of thirty-eight that, that I'm on between now and September thirteenth. So it has been, has been exciting and had a great response so far from folks. So just a little bit about voting. Tomorrow, early voting starts where folks are gonna be able to come into the county office and begin voting in person, eight to four thirty, eight AM to four thirty PM. And then there's four dates that they are gonna be open until five PM. And so we've been communicating that out to our, to our local voters. Absentee, people can request those absentee ballots right now and they can do that through the twenty-ninth of August. And so right now, we're working to get those absentee ballots and out to people if they're requesting those. And those will start to be mailed tomorrow as well. And those have to be in the day of election by eight PM, just like when the election ends. We have a satellite voting day. We did a petition of our community and got the signatures needed to have a satellite voting location to make one more convenient voting location for our community to be able to vote. And so from three thirty to nine thirty PM out at South Hardin High School, we will have a satellite voting location on Tuesday, September sixth. And then finally, our election day is on Tuesday, September thirteenth, that next week from seven AM to eight PM here, right here at the Hardin County Courthouse. And then finally, we have, the most important part is the, how do we pay for it? And I talked a little bit about being able to use our current PEPAL and SAVE money that we have on hand to fund part of this project. And then we're asking for nine point nine million dollars from taxpayers, which would be a two-dollar increase on their, on their taxes for residential. And so you can see that with our rollbacks and our assessed value, we're looking at about a hundred dollar increase in taxes on a hundred thousand dollar home would be where we're at. And then you can see here with our agricultural land, we're looking at just under three dollars an acre in additional taxes per year per acre of farm land. I know that we've had some new assessed values come out in the last couple of weeks. And so we're gonna just continue to communicate the importance of, importance of this project. I know that, you know, that's always, that's always kind of the sticking point for some people is, is where they're going to end up on taxes. But I think, kind of like the YSS person was talking here, if we don't continue to build and expand and improve our facilities, it's a it's a struggle to, it's a struggle to, to keep going. I had ten families come into our community this summer and wanted to tour of our schools. And they go to our high school and they, and they love it and they go to our elementary school and, and there's always that, those questions start coming up. They want to know where the tunnel is that goes underneath the ground to connect to the different buildings. And I'm like that, that, that doesn't, that doesn't exist. We have a new business that wants to come to town. What do they want to do? They want to come and see, see our schools. The projects that we put together here, they aren't, they aren't flashy, but they're going to set us up to have an attractive school that's going to, again, set us up for the next fifty years as far as this elementary school goes and set us up with some wonderful current technical education spaces. So we just invite our community members to get out there and vote and appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. And I'd be happy to answer any questions after that.
What do you do with the old gymnasium?
Yes, the old gymnasium is going to remain. There's, there's a lot of difference between building codes and fire codes and those sort of things of having a gym that's just utilized for recreation use versus utilized by a school district on a daily basis. And so that gym will remain and will be able to remain to be utilized. We've talked with Park and Rec about a potential future partnership there. There's lots of grant opportunities when you start bringing city and community and Park and Recs together. But like, we can't go and get those grants on our own as a school and there's a lot of them that the city can't go and get on their own. But if we came together and partnered together, it's gonna be an opportunity we're hoping for to be able to utilize that facility as more of a community recreation area, a place where our community is gonna be able to go out there and walk during the day instead of having to get up at five AM to use our high school before the high school day starts. And so that, that's the, that's the goal in the future with that gym. The, the problem that we have is if we go in there and begin to even start to renovate that building, all of the building code and ADA compliance stuff comes up and that actually makes the building of a new gym less expensive than renovating the current gym. So we're at six point one million dollars for renovation of that, of our current gym and we're at five point three million dollars to build a new gym of actually larger size that allows us to split the court down the middle with the curtain to allow two youth practices to happen in there at the same time and have full court for sub varsity and ninth grade games there as well with lockers and shower rooms and that sort of thing that we don't currently have access to.
And just as a reminder, back when I was a kid, you had two gymnasiums. You told, you tore the old one, just tore the old one down. So growing up, we did have the two gymnasiums. But I guess my question with this gym, I, what are we doing with it? Is it still your neighbor, not your school? You're gonna join with the city? And how are you? It's still an expense.
Right, right. Yep, yep, yep. And so, yeah, we, we have, we have planned to, to get it up to usage for a recreation facility. We're, we're looking at under a mil, under a million dollars. And as far as the outside facade and that sort of thing goes, we have about ten years left of useful life on that, the roof and, and the current brick and that sort of thing. At that point, if, if we have, if nothing else has come together as far as grants and the community partnership, we will have the Pepel and Save money back available to be able to do those, to be able to do those renovations that are, that are needed on that, on that facility. And so that'll be, that'll be a future board's decision on, on what they're, what they're wanting to do as far as down the road with, with that facility in ten years. So right now it has ten years of useful life. It just doesn't have ten years of useful life left as a elementary school. Like our fire marshal said, we got about a year or two left in there without doing the work that they have been telling us to do the last thirty years. And so we're kind of on that, we're getting on that borderline of, of that warning of being able to use that space. And if we don't have that space available for our kids to use, then we're back to trying to use our lunchroom for physical education classes. And we have actually, while we're the roof in there to, and so it doesn't have hoops in there anymore. So we would have to really get, really get creative there if we're not able to get something done. Any other questions?
I don't want to put you on the spot, but when are your next couple of community engagement sessions?
Yeah, well, tomorrow I will be presenting to the Eldora Quanis at noon. And then I'll be at the Eldora Community Guard, oh, excuse me, the Public Library at ten for a community presentation. And then from four to six on Thursday, I will be at the Eldora Community Garden. And on Friday, I'll be out at the football game, an hour before the football game to, for a Q and A session as well. And then this weekend, nine to eleven, open house at the elementary school, eleven thirty to twelve thirty at the high school and Sunday, four to six at the elementary school, six thirty to seven thirty at the high school. And so lots of, lots of, yeah, lots of opportunities for people to come out to see our facilities, to ask questions. And like I said, I just want to provide all the information that I can to folks and as, have as many avenues as possible to present this information. So I want to thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
All right. I'm gonna go make sure that lunch goes off without a hitch.
He said all the teachers showed up, all the buses.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're batting a thousand. So far, so good, so far, so good.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
All right, next item I have, Taylor, do you wanna? I, I can kind of lead into this, but next item is consideration to approve the joint public service agreement with the city of Owassa on their bridge replacement. So you don't have to, you don't have to tell about this trials and tribulations and getting it finalized, but.
So, yeah, you know, we signed the DOD agreement. I don't know if that's last week or two weeks ago, but uh, so we signed it. I went to lots of council, they signed it. So now we need to make an official twenty eighty with them. So it, it's almost the exact same as we did with Alden, but instead of the fifty fifty split, and again, this is only if it goes over the million dollars, which I don't anticipate it will. So instead of fifty fifty split, we did with Alden, it is a hundred and zero lotsa. Lance has asked for clarification on that sometimes, so according to I L Code, for any city under five hundred, if it is on our farm to market road, like for the road maintenance, it is a hundred percent city zero or a hundred percent county zero city. For construction purposes, you're supposed to set up separate arrangements. So we decided, let's do the same thing because the Wassa has all of thirty people in it. You know, I, I feel like if we ask them to pay for it, they would bankrupt their town. And again, it should, should come out to zero dollars. So this is just for, if anything is over, we'll be a hundred, they'll be zero.
Thank you. So I can ask for a motion to approve the joint public service agreement with the city of Owassa.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item for consideration would be resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four. That's the resolution establishing the twenty between the city of Owassa and Harden County.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Jolene?
Lance?
Aye.
Aye, BJ?
Aye, motion carries.
Yeah, your highway is open now, correct?
It's not my highway.
The highway you live on.
Yeah. So, yep. I did have a truck driver, I saw an Alby on the other day. He said, my company was worried about a work comp issue with my back getting beat up and those worries have been put to bed. So, yeah, the crew was very professional. They were very, you know, expeditious about things. They didn't let a little bit of rain, while this little bit get in the way, they still were out there working. So I think project was very, very well done. Next item I have is consideration of amending the current agreements for compromise and assignment of Harden County tax sale certificates. So there was just an issue with the technology side of the, the process of assigning the tax sale certificates. So after conferring with County Attorney Meyer and Treasurer Ike Meyer, I think we're on the right track to get things finalized today once and for all.
Do you want to highlight some of the changes as to why this is?
Yeah, basically, our, our software program will not allow me to change the net tax of the subsequent payments. So what's on the tax sale can be adjusted, those two years worth of tax and can be compromised and the interest on the subsequent can always be compromised. And so that's why we haven't had that problem before because we had always compromised the interest and the people that we were assigning the tax sales to were paying all the net tax. So when I went to compromise those subsequent taxes, I could not get it done in our, in our software program. And after conferring with Tyler, it's just not something that can happen. So as the city being a municipality, I can assign that to them, leave all the charges on the, the parcel. So if somebody does come back after they get their notice of to, to redeem, they can come back and they would have to pay all those taxes where then all those tax sellers would go to proper authorities. Where if we take those charges off, then, you know, they wouldn't have all those taxes to pay. So this is gonna be better protecting the city and any other taxing authority that is in that. So that it, that does get redeemed because sometimes that happens. The owner always has the right to pay those taxes back. So this will just be a better method of, of assigning the tax sale certificates. And I didn't realize that because we have never done that in this software program. I apologize for the.
Can you read that off again?
Sure. So it'd be consideration in amending the current agreements for compromise and assignment of Harden County tax sale certificates.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion?
That's the next two items combined, pretty much.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you covered everything. Why?
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I made a note over top of one of the agenda items. Consideration to approve the estimate for concrete work at the EMA building. And actually, it's concrete and some other construction, taking out a set of steps as well and replacing those with accessible steps. So there's concrete work in the amount of six thousand thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents. And then the other construction work in the amount of four thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and zero cents.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion, a second, a discussion?
It does add some additional usable space because we're gonna take out the main steps that go down into the EOC. But also add.
Creates a platform.
Right, and then there'll be a platform there and you can go up and use the top that.
That area up there, yep.
And concrete just needs to be done out there.
And Renee has the first standing office. She sits on emergency management commission as the supervisor's member. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash thirty-five. That's a proposal for loss fund expenditures. So this was what Jim Bowman and Tam Elordain presented to us last week on the economic engineering project. While we don't have a formal kickoff date, my suggestion would have the funds ready for use when we get all the people and parts of the puzzle put together. So it was of not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars in economic development and community betterment portion of the lost sales tax to support Alliant Energy's Economic Engineering Pilot Project.
I'll make that motion approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
It's gonna take a lot of community effort in, in this as well.
And I, yeah, it, it, this is not something that's gonna happen overnight. And I was talking to Jim Bowman and Tam both within the last couple of days that this is something that we'd like to kick off sooner or later, but as you heard, Dr. Zalmer, a lot of our community members are, are very busy doing their due diligence with the bond referendum and there's just a lot going on. So the timing of the kickoff is gonna be critical. If you kickoff too soon, you might not get the engagement you're looking for. And if you wait too long, what opportunity to finesse? So it's finding that sweet spot. If there's nothing else, roll call Jolene?
Lance?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is I've got a handful of changes of status here. I'm gonna start with the conservation department. So with our summer interns and how it's starting again. So there's the end of the seasonal position. So I've got Josh Hufflefinger was a summer intern. And the end of the seasonal position is dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
I can motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, a discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, Tate Miller, summer intern, ending date August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is the hiring of Cooper Ingles as a conservation interpretive park technician effective August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two at a rate of nineteen twenty-three an hour.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Um, I didn't know if this is replacing someone.
Yeah, this is, yep, this is replacing somebody that left in early July.
I'd say a while there.
Yep.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is resignation of Travis Prohaska from the secondary roads department, effective August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, to rate twenty-three oh three an hour.
I can motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is the hiring in the county attorney's office for an assistant county attorney effective tomorrow, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, at a rate of seventy-five thousand dollars a year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. County Attorney Meyer, due to our meeting being a Wednesday today, did have information he asked me to share. So Brett Schilling has recently moved back to the area. He's an experienced attorney of twenty years, thirteen years in prosecution. He was the assistant county attorney in Calhoun County from September ninth of two thousand nineteen to July of twenty twenty-two. He was the first assistant Benton County Attorney from July fifteenth to September twenty nineteen. He's moved back to the area through his wife's employment. And look, I think we've found something that a lot of counties are having difficult time finding is a county attorney that wants to practice prosecution in rural Iowa. So it's great that County Attorney Meyer went out and was able to find somebody. With that being said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is other business. Michael? Michelle?
Tax statements went out and you can pay now or you can wait until the end of September, but you want to have them paid before October first.
Okay, Jolene?
Oh, two special elections, September thirteenth, absentee voting for those starts tomorrow upstairs. And then of course, the general in November.
Taylor, anything else to add today? Okay, Lance?
No.
Renee? All right, County Attorney Meyer gave me a note. He asked that I share in regards to the approved opioid settlement update. So Harden County Attorney has set up our portal and that will allow us to receive distributions. And County Attorney Meyer made a good point this morning that he asked for paper checks to be sent to the county rather than electronic so that our checks and balances actually will physically see the check and know when it's here. And, you know, some strange dollar amount doesn't just show up and potentially lead to more questions and we can have answers sometimes. So that will start, the first distribution with an unknown amount will come in the, the coming weeks. And so the county will need to track these funds and spend only on opioid prevention mitigation product, projects and expenses. So, and I don't have anything else to add today. I can ask for adjournment or recess.
Make the adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
No, very.
Correct.